Motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Thank you. Motion carries. This time will stand for Pledge of Allegiance, followed by our invocation from past items.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Most holy interactors, God, we come before you one more time humbly as we know how. Father God, we about to go into this meeting tonight, Father God. And Father God, we ask you, Father God, to touch each and every one heart, Father God. Father God, we ask you to keep us, Father God, as we go forward, Father God. Let this meeting, Father God, have a free flow, Father God. And Father God, when it all said and done, Father God, we ask for you to give us travel and mercy that we'll be able to go back to our own home, that you have blessed. We ask for any blessings, the son Jesus, name of everybody, say amen.
Amen. Glad to say, welcome to everyone here this evening. Thank you for attending our meeting. Glad to see that you are concerned and care enough to take time out of your busy evening to join us up here at the county building. Thank you for that. The next is approval of the agenda. And with consent to counsel, given the amount of people we have here for public comment, I would ask that the approval of the agenda would be to move the proclamation to the Sneed family to before presentation, section A with DOT, followed by item 11A as well. So if I could have a motion to that for our agenda approval, please.
So move.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we have approval of the minutes of November 7th and November 21st, both of 2022, please.
So move that the agenda, that the motion be approved.
Second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Presentations and proclamations, next. We have a proclamation to be read in honor of Mr. Leroy Sneed. And at this time, we would like to invite Mr. Sneed's daughter and any other family members down to the front here, and ask that counsel joins us down there for the presentation of the proclamation, which will be read by Vice Chairman Clark.
First, I would like to say, as I said at the funeral service, Mr. Sneed was an icon. He was a legend in Jasper County. He had his hand into everything as long as it was right. Now, if it was wrong, he didn't deal with it. He'd tell you all again, ah, he didn't know about that. But we thank him for all that he's done, 91 years. And we also thank his family for letting us have him for that long. Because when someone couldn't pick him up, his daughter was always there to deliver him. So on behalf of the Jasper County Council, the Jasper County would like to recognize many accomplishments and contributions of Mr. Leroy Sneed in the light of his untimely and sudden past. Whereas Mr. Leroy Sneed was devoted to serving his county and community as a prominent leader in Jasper County. And whereas the Jasper County Council would like to recognize Mr. Leroy Sneed as a native of South Carolina and for his service on the Jasper County Council for 12 years from 1995 until 2003, as both councilman and as chairman.
Whereas Mr. Leroy Sneed also served as chairman of the Citizens Organization for Public Services. Whereas in recognition of Mr. Leroy Sneed's service at the request of the General Assembly, the Department of Transportation, named Mitchellville Road in Jasper County, Councilman Leroy Sneed rode and erected appropriate markers or signs along this portion of the road containing this designation. Now therefore, be it resolved and proclaimed that Jasper County Council in recognition of these contributions to Jasper County, be it known that this proclamation has been adopted by the Jasper County Council duly assembled this 6th day of February 2023.
I just want to thank everybody for doing what has happened here tonight. I am grateful. Thank you so much.
Okay, our next item is Ms. Wagner. We do have a public hearing and the consideration of the second reading of the ordinance 0-2023-01 to amend the official zoning map of Jasper County as to transfer a property at 11421 Gilson Branch Road bearing Jasper County Tax Map Number 050-00-04-011, consisting of 31.504 acres from the Rural Preservation Zone to the Resource Extraction Zone on the Jasper County Official Zoning Map. We do have a public hearing. Ms. Lisa, did you want to make comments prior to the public hearing? That's fine.
Okay, I'll just give a very quick overview. This is a 31 and a half acre property located at 11421 Gilson Branch Road. Request to change the zoning from Rural Preservation to Resource Extraction for the purposes of creating a five acre recreational pond and removing the dirt from site. The 2018 Jasper County Comprehensive Plan, the Future Land Use Map, identifies this area as rural conservation, which are areas that seek to protect and promote the character of Jasper County that largely exists today outside of the municipalities. Non-residential development may be appropriate if it's buffered correctly. The properties immediately adjacent to the site are zoned Rural Preservation and Residential. There are approximately 20 properties that are developed with single-family homes within a half mile radius. The property is accessed by Gilson Branch Road, which is a two-lane state-maintained road that's classified as a collector road. In this case, the setbacks are 300 feet, which can be met. The size of the pond is allowed without rezoning, but at a smaller scale. It's the selling of the dirt and the 20 feet depth that requires a de-hack mining permit. As far as the public hearing, we did receive a petition with 231 signatures opposing it, and three other separate comments were received. I've put a copy of that at each of your places here tonight. And that's all I have for now. I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Before we have our public hearing, I'd like to have a workshop at 5:00 to kind of discuss some of the details of this property. The five acre recreational use pond is permitted based on the size of the 31 acres and the pond. At five acres, the setbacks control that size of that pond, however, never be any larger than five acres. This is a residential use. It's not a commercial development. I know there's been some misinformation out there, so I'm just trying to help kind of inform and answer some of the questions that some people may have. This is a husband and wife starting their family. They bought a new mobile home and put on the property in the middle of the property, which is where the pond is going to be proposed to be built. And there's been a couple of questions about well intrusion. Well, the aquifer is 100 foot plus where you would have any type of intrusion to a water well. This is basically groundwater for recreational use fishing pond, to swim in and fish. And like I said, he owns, actually, I think, maybe close to 70 acres there. But this 31 acre tract has been subdivided for him to put his house on. And they have plans to do that. So I tried to do a bit of research on this as well. And that's why we had our workshop at 5:00 today to ask questions and try to find out what is going on, was permitted. I know that the Jasper County Planning Commission gave us a favorable review, unanimously passed it on to the Jasper County Council. So that's why we're all here tonight. I know that we have several people that have signed in. We do have a 30-minute limit for public hearing. I know that many people may have the same message. So in the essence of time, I would like to maybe ask everyone who has signed in to maybe consider that, maybe have one or two people speak for the group, possibly. But with that being said, we'll go ahead and have our public hearing and allow that time. And first on our list, I think, is Janet Spence. Janet? Janet, if you would, just state your name and your address, where you live.
My name is Janet Spence. I reside at 151 Hollyhaw Drive, which originally in South Carolina. May I go ahead and read?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, my name is Janet Spence, and I represent the members of the Gillis-
Spence, I apologize. Madam Clark, could you run the time? I was Lisa doing that. I just want to be fair to everybody. Thank you.
My name is Janet Spence, and I represent the members of the Gillisonville community who oppose and request to have the property location of 11421 Gilson Branch Road rezoned. I live within a half a mile of the property in question. And I, along with a number of the community members, are deeply concerned about several aspects of the proposed project. We believe safety would be a major issue. There is already a number of large trucks that travel on Highway 462. Adding additional trucks that would be entering and exiting the road near our homes will bring about additional safety hazards. There are families with small children who live within a half a mile of the property in question, and these parents are concerned of the well being of their children. The lack of fencing directly around the pond is also of concern. The operation will create a large volume of dirt to be transported. The application states that this could take up to five years, which would require families to be exposed to noise, dust, dirt, traffic for long periods of time. Maintenance of the highway during this period would also be another concern. We have been able to find, we have not been able to find an environmental study which would provide some idea of a long-term impact on things like the water table or other unknown factors that could come up over the period of time. As the county planning staff pointed out, the 2018 Jasper County Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Map identified this area as a rural conservation. This project, as requested, does not comply with the Rural Presentation Zone criteria. Therefore, if the zoning is changed to the Resource Extract District, it could bring up harm to members of the community, their property, and change the character of the community to include rich historical district of Gillisonville. Once this change has been made, it will open doors for others to request additional mining permits, thus further excavates the impact of the community. For many of us, the land has been in our family line for well over 50 years. Therefore, we urge you not to change anything that would devalue or cause harm to our inheritance. Mr. Chairman and the members of the council on behalf of the concerned citizens of our community, we request you vote to disapprove rezoning this property located at 11421 Gilson Branch Road. Thank you.
Ms. Spence, were you speaking, I guess, for the entire group? Or did we call other people to speak, or were you the representative?
Someone else to speak, Mr. Colonel Donald Taylor. Mr. Don Newton. Yes.
Well. Good evening to the chair, council, and to the community, Don Newton. The way that I understand this, there is rezoning for mining operations in the historic district of Gillisonville. Is how I see what we're dealing with tonight. However, I'm happy to report, Senator Council, Mr. Farmer called me this morning. We had a chat. And we agree that the community was left out of this as it was coming to this council. So what I'm asking tonight, in a humble position and a critical position, that it goes back to the planning. And Mr. Farmer would like to meet the community, and we need to talk through this before we go forward. Once again, I humbly ask that you do that. Moving forward without the community input is critical. I yield back the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newton. I appreciate your comments and think that's a very wise decision. And I think that's something that the council has discussed as well, and the consensus as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. At this time, is it anybody else, Mr. Newton, that would like to speak? That we need to call, or are you?
There is others, like I said, returning the 232 comments in the petition, but there is others that want to speak. Please, sir, step aside.
Okay, so I have, and your name, please, sir?
Richard, Ella Richard Jackson.
Jackson. Yes, sir, Mr. Jackson.
I just want to say that we're talking about one man in a big community. It's in our area for his pleasure, because it's going to end, that this is going to make a reaction center, I mean, a resurrection center for it, but yet still is on their property. And this is a great historic property from the corner, from 462, where the old courthouse used to be at, and permanent church. Mr. Mark Cavill been there for a long time. And I hear you say that it's not going to harm the deep well. Anytime you dig an area that deep, that water going to drain forward to where that hole at. Because I've seen many times when the yard is full of water, if you dig a trench or anything, that'll help drain that area. So I've already seen it happen. But we need to consider the most people that in that area, the noise that you really already mentioned, and the thing that going to happen, going and coming. Anytime we start something, it never finishes like we started. It's always putting an extra in it. So companies say one thing, but when things start, they make another. And so we ask for the council to consider any other way we can work this thing out without having to have all these trucks and this pond coming in this area. So we need to look at all the areas that can be a blessing to the people there and the person that have this area. And rezoning, I totally disagree. Rezoning our area for one person on their land and rezoning everything? I think we need to leave the rezoning out and try to deal with what we're going to do with that pond. I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Grant.
Okay. To the council, members, and as we always refer to, already the community. The community already signed against, and we have almost 300 signatures done against this project. All right? And we understand that they want to do a pond that we are not against, so nobody utilizing their own property. Because if you want to build a home on this property, a private pond, that's fine. All they do is because I have a pond. Our home, all they do, he don't need to have the zone to build a private home, it's all put upon. You don't have to have the zoning change. Because we don't need the mining, or zoning for mining. Because that could create so much other problem. We have enough problem now with our water line at certain time of the year because we have turf, got several turf or puffs around. And we already have some problem with the water line. So we don't need this added point for mining. We don't need to change their zoning. Because the property is still private property. If they want to build a nice home, whatever, they don't need that. The zoning unnecessary has to be changed. So all we asking for the county council, and you know that. You represent, I'm just for the, represent us as a community and as citizen of this county. And we asking you, heed to our request, that you do not approve this request for mining property on Gillisonville. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Let's see, for Ms. Lorraine Bradley, does Ms. Lorraine want to speak, or not? Mr. Freddie. Ms. Horton.
Good afternoon. Can you all get here by, and everybody from Gillisonville, please raise your hand. Thank you, if you allow that, I'm sorry. Sheriff and members of the council, my name is Panzetta Horton, and I reside at 366 Langfordville Road, Gillison Hill, South Carolina. I oppose the request of the 31.504 acres, map number 050004011 on Gilson Branch Road from Rural Preservation Zone to Resource Extraction Zone on Jasper County Official Zoning Map. The zoning application permit red sign was not clearly visible from the highway. I had to ride the road two or three times a scene. It was kind of stuck under the bushes. The public hearing sign was much clearer. For better understanding of citizens, please go back and review the Planning Commission meeting dated December 13th, 2022. And please review Jasper County meeting, January 17th, 2023, the first reading. Counsel, on behalf of the concerned citizens of Gillisonville community, we humbly ask you, please, please, both know, rezonate this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Horton. All right, Michael Jenkins. Or you, by the time Johnny humans. Okay, we have, Mr. Yeomans, come on up.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is Johnny Yeomans. And our property located at 288 Langfordville Road, Gillisonville, South Carolina. What I would like to say to each and every one, we need to look at the geography of Gillisonville. I've been to Gillisonville about 60 years ago. If you notice, all of the front parts of the property, of the areas, the Caucasians lived toward the front of Gillisonville, which have access to the highway, which comes through the 278 and the rest of the courtyard square. But in the rear of that, that's where the black people property is located. That's where we are. Now, we've been there, basically, some of us, I heard 50 years, much longer than that. So now, this property, they talking about rezoning or something, is in our area. But I was thinking, I know for a fact, it's been too long. That was something that people want to put in an area that where the blacks live, regardless of what the consequences are. They go ahead and rezonate, and they do it because they don't care about our health. They don't care about the roads. They don't care about trucking. They don't care about safety. They don't care about anything. They do it because of money or profit. Now, I know, as we stand here tonight, in one particular area in Hardyville, there was a racetrack in one of our councilwoman area that was going to be built about 15 years ago. And they fought it, and they talked about the damage and extent that it would do to their neighborhood, which was located in Tomberville. Well, the racetrack was built, but eventually it was taken down. Well, I know this customer, she didn't go for that. She didn't go along with them building that racetrack in that area because of negative impact it would have upon their community. And the other thing that we have to think about, will this property, I mean, building of this mine, either the area pond that we're talking about, will it devalue our property? Is it going to be something for commercial, or will it be residential? Because if it's commercial, when you have all these trucks on the road, as I said earlier, and everything's going to tear the road up, it's not going to be safe for us, and it's going to devalue our property. I know digging a pit in a community will not, will not help our community. So I am against.
Thank you, sir. Robert Smith? There, Robert Smith? Anyone else? I have Ms. Carolyn Smith? Frances Smith? Okay, public hearing going once. Does this relate to the rezoning? Okay, if it doesn't relate to rezoning, then that's not the time. At this time, we're going to close the public hearing for the rezoning. Any questions from council?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think I would like to make a motion that be cheerful this to give council a chance to sit down and look further into this and give a glance on some of the citizens of Gillisonville and see what kind of grievance people come to, come to, before we do a second reading.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions from council? At this time, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you all. We'll allow those of you who'd like to exit the room time to do so so that the other presenters will have an opportunity to come in with their items on. Mr. Folger. Will you ask, Mr. Folger? Mr. Folger, will you ask Barnwell Fishburne for them to please each turn a right outside the door? Anywhere. Mr. Deputy, you mind shutting those doors for us, please?
Okay. Everybody good? At this time, I'd like to welcome Mr. Barnwell Fishburne, our district DOT commissioner, and Adam Bishop, our Jasper County DOT representative for SC DOT here for Jasper. And they will be presenting a report on current road projects in progress. Project set to begin in 2023 in a timeline for phase one of the I-95 widening. So I'd like to welcome them both. Thank them for taking time. They've traveled a good little distance from Mr. Fishburne to come here and present to us and kind of update us on Jasper County. And I will say as he's coming forward, how much I and the council and the people of this county appreciates his commitment to Jasper. Every time I've called him, he's picked up the phone, he's came down and he's done a little ride through tour back in 2022. He has been very responsive and supportive of Jasper County and our infrastructure needs as it relates to our highway system. We know that it is a challenging situation there, funding. And we have a lot of needs when it comes to our roads. So Barnwell, I want to thank you for your support on that. And at this time, we'll turn that over to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Members of council, good to see you all again. I can't recall whether you were here in 2017 when I first came to introduce myself.
Barnwell and I were.
All right, well, welcome everyone else. A lot has changed with the DOT and the chairman asked me some time ago if I would give a very brief synopsis of what has transpired in recent years since I came on as 2017. And I'll briefly touch on, very briefly, on what happened in the state and where we are in Jasper County. In the state, you must realize that a lot has transpired as of, and I'll give you an indication. As of 2016, before Secretary Hall came on as Secretary of Transportation, DOT had $70 million in accounts payable and no money in the bank. And what's happened since 2016 is the legislature passed the gas tax, a number of other things came in, came on. And under her leadership, we moved on as the fourth largest state system in the United States, with the fifth largest growing population. We pulled everything together, all the resources, all the contractors with the gas tax money. And we now have, and I think you'll see on the slide in real world, four, about four and a half billion dollars in contract. It's an enormous task. It's been incredible undertaking. And under her leadership, we have pulled people from out of states, contractors. And this state is wide open with the DOT. Many people don't know it. There's an example of what we're paying its gas tax to 28 cents, .75 compared to the other two states around us. And it's, South Carolina's kind of, it's an interesting thing because we have the fourth largest highway system in the United States. And you ask why? Well, it's because we have all the subdivision roads in the state. Decades in the past, DOT took in subdivision roads. In Georgia, they don't do that. So we're playing catch up in a lot of places. And as you can see on this scale, from nine to 2022, we've got it going on. So I did want to pass that along to you, next slide, please, ma'am. Okay, that goes back to the 10-year strategic plan, which was developed in 2017. And in that, there's rural road safety program, which all of you have seen on the rural roads, where we widen the shoulders, they'll be four feet wide. Then we're going into the paving, 6,900 miles of resurfacing that we've done. We've done two, we've rebuilt 287 bridges. The new target is 500. And we're working on widening 101 miles of interstate, I-95 being one of them. So this is a, this is a current map of the interstate projects. And you'll see down at the bottom, we're scheduled to start resurfacing I-95 next year, which is 2024. And what's taken so long is there's been a shortage in concrete, believe it or not. But we had to patch it southbound and northbound before we could resurface it. So the plan is in 2024, the black top it all the way to I-26, beginning at mile marker zero, actually, at the bridge. And then in 2024, the latter part of 2024, start widening the first eight miles. And then in 2026, the next section on up the point south. So it's an ongoing project. You can see now, if you ride up the road, you can see what's going on. But next year, those orange cones, you'll think it's a state flower. There're going to be so many of them. I'm telling you. And it's all up and down the interstate. I-26, we're six-laning in from the port. And it's just going to open up, the economy be wide open. Traffic fatalities, we're still trying to work on it. And this is about next to my last slide, which is dropping. But it's something we're very concerned with, the rural safety program addresses that. Next slide, ma'am. And then for those in, mainly in the cities, we have, we have some bicycle fatalities. We've lowered those. We've made tremendous progress with safe highways and we're very proud of that, making that number down. So we moved to Jasper County a little bit and I've got Adam here. He can fill in some of the gaps. Approximately 107 miles of pavement projects in Jasper County can improve as part of the strategic plan. And an additional 11.3 miles is included in the 2023 payment program. It brings the total to 107 centerline miles. All of you are pretty much aware of this project. It's been ongoing as part of the US-17 widening. DOT has added new signalized intersection and new turn lanes for safety of intersection of US-17 and 315. And then further, along with 17, four miles, 17 between Highway 315 and the Georgia border. You can read the rest of that, moving on. We've discussed that already, but it's an interesting thing. We also started on the I-26, I-95 interchange. So that corridor is going to be under construction probably well into the early 30s, 20, 30, 35 into there. So that's, that's an interesting project. Bridge replacements, new bridge being constructed along I-95 southbound over Bagshell Swamp. And northbound bridge is being rehabilitated. New bridge construction is expected to begin later this year. New bridge along I-95 over SC-46 is being evaluated in conjunction with the ongoing I-95 widening project. All right. I'm going to turn it over to Adam a little bit. As you all know, the CTC, there are lots of pots of money that the DOT allocates funds to. The CTC on county level gets their share of money, generally five, six million a year. There are other, the COGS, council of governments get money. So there are a lot of pots to pull from. Every project you see going on is not strictly a DOT product. The funds come from the DOT for the most part. Other local folks are in charge of picking the road. So let me see if Adam, Adam, do you want to add anything?
Do you have any questions about anything?
No, we got questions. We have questions now. It's not moving that easy.
Also, well, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm Adam Bishop. I'm the assistant district maintenance engineer. But I have been coming down here to Jasper quite a bit. We do have a vacancy in Jasper right now. The engineer here retired. So I've been trying to fill in.
We knew even well, this guy. I hate to see him retire, but he deserved it.
Yep, so I'm trying to do the best I can, fill in. So I was, we've had a lot of small projects lately, too. I don't know if you all have noticed, on the interstate out there, we've recently repaved from zero to four. That asphalt was getting very, very rough, so that was redone. And we've also worked on two of the bridges northbound around the 11 and the 13. When you hit those before, there were pretty bad dips right there. So fortunately, we were able to elevate those back up where they need to be.
If you hit those going 80 or more, you were in for a ride.
Yes. So I'm very thankful. I know that's not one of the projects that gets a lot of attention, but for people to travel that on a regular basis is noticeable. And we've also done some interstate repairs out there, just to try to keep the interstate as safe as possible. Mr. Fishburne also mentioned the CTC. We do work very closely with them because our projects, you know, they go hand in hand. We've got a meeting next Monday and I'm going to go over there and present a couple of options for them.
Mr. Bishop, if you go and cover this, I know that a question that we all have are as far as our state roads, you know, excluding I-95. I mean, we're excited about that. And I know that's something that's been a long, long time coming. And a lot of people work on that. And that's great to see it finally, you know, becoming a reality because of the major, you know, artery between New York and Miami. So we get, when there's a wreck on I-95, if you get on Facebook, everybody's complaining about, you know, cars coming in your front yards, turning around. And I mean, all of our perimeter roads are, that's a nightmare. So we're very appreciative of that. But some of our main arteries like Highway 462, which when you get off at the Cusa Hachi exit, and that's a shortcut to Hilton Head and get into Beaufort County, a lot of people traveling, you know, north and south take that. And that road is from Cooler Store to Highway 170 is in just terrible condition. Parts of 278 north through Gillisonville and up towards Graves. That's a hurricane evacuation route as well. It's in, just, it's in chams. So we were kind of wanting to update too, in addition to what y'all done tonight on maybe when some of those versions are going to be repaved, resurfaced.
All right. I will say that on 462, there's already a project there that goes, it's from near Cooler Store to Marsh Cove. So it's not all the way down to 170, but there is a large portion of that that's already ready to go.
And then have you ridden from the entrance where you turn off at Snake Road and the entrance to Waste Management? From there to 170, because that is, that's another section that is super bad.
And there are a lot of potholes out there that we're addressing on a regular basis. And unfortunately, I don't think that that is one that is on the radar right now. I'm not sure why it's not. But right now, it's just from Cooler Store to Marsh Cove. And also a US-601 should be done at about the same time.
What section of 601?
All of 601, that's from 321 to the Hampton Line. And then we were looking beyond that. We were considering US-278. We've been spending a lot of time and resources out there, especially again on that Hampton side coming this way. None of that is set in stone, but that's something we've looked heavily at, is to try to get some work done on that. So it's probably going to come down to between 278 and that other section of 462, down to 170.
Is that, so you probably have to choose between those two?
Yeah, unfortunately, we can't get all of them. So I've been looking at 178. It seems like we've been spending more time out there with those potholes. But both of them need some attention.
Is that something that maybe 278 or vice versa could be, you know, one this year, one next year?
It's a possibility. I know to do all of 278, it would take probably three years of our funding just to take care of that.
We okay with that.
It's a balance.
I know. Well, we want to get all we can.
We were also, like we were having a CTC meeting. We're looking at another section of 462 that's bad as well. That's the Gillisonville area out there. If you go 278, make a left, we had a lot of issues out that way. So it's not just that one in 462. And then I was also.
On the 2023 docket?
It is not, but I was going to bring that up with CTC and see if that was something that they would be interested in pursuing, along with the frontage road out here between 95 and the railroad tracks. We've had a lot of issues out there. The road's very rutted. The water gets in those ruts and it's pretty dangerous out there.
Freedom Parkway out. No, that was me.
Oh, sorry.
Freedom Parkway, used to be 170. That road is going to kill somebody. Pato, that road from, from, what's that, 17? The Ed Crossway still was.
Levy Limehouse, Levy Limehouse Road.
Yeah. It's Levy Limehouse Road go like that, but Freedom Parkway turn going to go up. That road is bad. That used to be the only road to get to the beach. It used to be 170.
No, Levy is also one that we're looking at for another pot of money that we have. We've had a lot of complaints out there.
Well, yeah. I knew that from, I served on the last committee. So all this information that you've given them, this is what we discuss and talk about.
Chairman, all real comments, asking some questions. You know, I travel all over the state. And all of a sudden, in 2023, we see a movement, get road done. And all the money in the state of South Carolina when it's allocated, you can go up into the Greenfield area, you go into the Murdoon Beach area, and that road just light airplane on. And then when you get down in this little park, they spend a lot of money on a highway right by my house, 320 miles. There's a lot of container boxes. There's trucks that go on our highway. Every minute of every hour of every day, carry some kind of produce, some kind of container boxes, log truck. They came in there two years ago and they made a checkerboard out of it. They spent all that money to go 11 miles and it looks like a checkerboard. And right where they spend all that money, all that highway breaking up there. They're not doing anything to fix the road. I want to ask you this question. What are they doing? Talk about putting more lanes in I-95. What are they going to do about more lanes in our local county when we got the building and all the economic development is coming toward Hardyville and coming toward Ridge and coming across this county? And they can't get out of the job. You got 278 where you can't get on the road. When you get the 336, when they have access on 95, I can't get out of my yard. And the road look like bubble gum. And no money is being spent in Hampton, Jasper County, but you go up that state and look at the difference in the roads. And they say, well, we don't have no money. But you let something happen in Murdoon Beach, or you let it happen in Greenfield or Sparkville, all of a sudden, they got money. They can fold lane, they can build a bridge, they can do whatever they want to do. But in Jasper County, they can't fix the dirt road. We got a problem inside of the county, not on I-95. We've been having problems on I-95. And I'll be there and going fly around on another lane on I-95 like a problem. It'll take forever to build another lane on I-95. But our infrastructure inside of the county has fell apart because the state of South Carolina has never put any money down in this area. You know it and you know it.
I know they never did anywhere until about five years ago.
And where did all the money go? When you tell everybody where all our money went, when they did get stimulus money to fix the infrastructure. When they did get stimulus money to fix the infrastructure in the state of South Carolina, where did it go?
It's, it's going into these highways.
You said these highways?
All over the state. There's 40,000 miles of road. It's all over the state.
I, I haven't seen that much going to Jopka County, sir. And I'm sorry, but I haven't seen what-
That's what he's here for. He's here to help us. That's why we got you.
Well, I sure hope so.
I'm from Columbia.
We haven't had it until far.
And representing the sixth district, which is a forest district in the state, I understand exactly what you're saying.
I didn't get it.
I say, representing the sixth district that I do, it's the rural counties, the forest counties in the state. And I understand what you're saying. And I promise you that the CTC is, is based on a formula. They're getting as much as they can get, and they're spending it wisely. If you choose people wisely to put on those boards, it's being spent wisely. And a lot of these roads are being, have been ranked in how bad they are. So it's just such a backlog. It's a huge backlog. And then on top of that, the permitting takes years, years. These permits for 95 have been ongoing for how long? Four years, five years? I'm telling you, the permitting is just insane. But it's coming on board, and that's what I said about these orange cones. You're going to see some action going on here in the next few years. I'm telling you.
I hope I do.
It has gotten better.
But I understand y'all go start, maybe Savannah River and come to Exodus and start with, is that correct?
That's the first name of the widening.
What you going to do when it bottlenecked there at Exodus?
Well, that's a good question, isn't it? Because everybody I know has hit that bottleneck, and I curse it every time I do. So we do what the money allows us to do.
I, I understand. I understand you've got to go by the laws and the rules. But we've got to put pressure on the upper people in South Carolina to get stuff done. And we've got to put pressure on federal government to get things done, and then they can put it on the back burner. What we suffering in this county, just like Mr. Clark said, these roads are toll all to people. They going to kill somebody. I used to ride a motorcycle, and I was scared that they'd tow you off the highway.
We are aware, I promise you. The Speaker of the House got caught in that bottleneck on 95 three weeks ago, and picked up the phone on everybody that had anything to do with transportation and blistered them. Everybody's aware. And everybody's aware it's backlog and how terrible it is. It's an embarrassment. So we understand that, and we're moving this. I promise you, I was as big a skeptic of the DOT as anybody on this planet when I went out on the commission. I didn't like DEHEC, I didn't like OCRM, I didn't like the Corps of Engineers because of the bureaucracy and follow. But I assure you, they are doing everything they can as fast as they can. And it's faster than many states because we are mobilized thanks to the gas tax five years ago. We have contractors here that other states can't get. And we are, they are actually having to give us some of the infrastructure money that they, they were allocated from the federal government in the last year because they couldn't use it to the tune of $120 million this year. So it's, it's a huge mobilization, and we're doing everything we can as fast as we can. It's just such a backlog. It's, it's unbelievable. Thank you, thank you.
Chair, go ahead.
Yes, sir, Councilman Kean. First of all, I want to congratulate you. When you have that website, when you go on the website, you put a pothole in there or something like that. I was impressed. People called me, everything. I mean, they wanted to know what was happening, how, where it was exactly, they were willing to come out. I just want to let you know that was, that should be advertised more, that website. It'll help you and help everybody. But now on the downside, I would like District Six, and that's what you're in, right?
Right.
To buy a paint truck. Because you're up 278, and you've got lines that don't go away. You pave it, and then you don't line it. That's dangerous. We, we have a whole program on rural safety. And when you don't have lines, you can't see the middle of the night. And how I found that out is I have a car that runs by itself. So I always put it on because it helps me when I drive. And all of a sudden, bells and whistles go off, 278, then it's back on, then it's off, then it's on. Please get the lines in there, can you repair it? And it's only when you do it internally, not externally.
Okay. We recently did buy a paint truck. We're still learning how to operate it.
Apparently so.
But it was a recent purchase, so it's, it's based in Colleton.
We need to get that thing down in Jasper.
Yeah, I mean, maybe just, I think that's very dangerous and would help out a great deal.
Thank you, Councilman Kean. That's that to me.
Yeah. You got the DOT right there originally?
I am based out of Charleston, but at least four days a week, I, I come to Ridge.
Okay, so on councilman acting, I, I think me and you been talking.
Yep, yeah, I think you, you sent me a picture today.
Yes, yes. I'm, I'm about pictures. Now, I understand what you, what y'all say, but I want to know if y'all throwing these street, these highway in a hat and they're picking out? Because I know I seen you this one right here. Where the water, that take the road and go fleeing, and you got to pretty much come to a stop if somebody come in. Because when you got people traveling, they don't even know how much water is pouring in that, in that road.
That's the frontage, right?
Right.
That, that's what I'm presenting to the CTC on Monday.
Okay, because for one, that's why I mean, I think for me and you talking, the first off, and I said, what y'all need to do, y'all need to ride these road when it's raining so y'all can see what road is pouring so much water. I mean, because if somebody hide complaining, it's going to be a lawsuit. I mean, I mean, because I look at I-95, I got several rides, and I pay a road fee every year, and I ain't seeing none of the roads I'm traveling getting done. Actually, like from Ridge to Hardyville, that road should have been fixed 10 years ago.
About 17?
Yeah, 17. And, um, like, um, like, like, because when Cam said to you, you know, do the road, then, then if you don't have nobody to go back, they cut the dirt down on the side of the road, and the road is falling water, and the road is jet black, and you really can't see the water on the road until you hit it. I'm going home down tonight and, 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 and then see the problem because you can't see. It blend right into the road. And soon as I got right there, my truck was locked up and ran that way, and a car coming to warn me, it pretty much had to stop.
That was on 17?
On 17. Same, because I tell you, once, once you get, um, the Ridge, you get the Cusa, and once you get the Cusa, going to points out, it hold water real bad, and that's why I was telling you on the phone that you need to ride the road when it ever had a hard rain, and you see exactly how much water being poured on the road, because it's going to cause a bad accident.
And I, I took your advice. Some of the photos that I took were out there in, in the rain, and that's one of the things we're going to present to the CTC.
Yeah. Okay.
Adam, have you ridden between Ridge and Hardyville on Highway 78? I remember Mr. Fishburne and I went down that road, and it's, it's, it's unbelievable. You can't even go to speed limit. I know we're not, we're not throwing darts at you. We just, you, we just let you know.
There's a tremendous need.
It is really, it is really bad. But I mean, you know, we, we just want to get help, you know? But anything you want to add or anything, Adam?
Um, I know you did mention 321 earlier.
Sure, sir.
Um, and there is actually a special project that's coming out on that with federal money. It's part of the Rural Road Safety Project. I was hoping it was going to be lit next month, but there's a little bit of a delay on that. It's, it's actually going to be in two parts. The first part is going to be from Hardyville up to Purysburg. So that's, I think it's about six miles. And then there's going to be another section going from there to the Hampton County line. That's going to be farther down the road. But that's going to be a large scale project where they're going to go in there and do some clearing, widen the road, you know, pave shoulders, guardrail where it needs it because that has been identified as a route that, that is not safe. So you are going to see something out there on 321.
People don't realize how many people left off and went, left off that road and went in there deep canal. There's people, I don't know how many deaths has happened on that road. People leave that road. You know how steep that road is and how deep their canal is on each side?
Yes.
Every week, they pulling somebody out of that canal, whether they get injured or whether they get killed or what else. And because the road, you can fall in the trucks, and they're doing like this right here. The road is so on, it doesn't have no base on it. And you can't put asphalt on something on my space because it's a wall out. And until they put some base up underneath that road, they can tap it four foot deep. And then eventually, it's going to separate out. And that's what happens on that road. And you can see it. You can see it.
Thank you, Councilman Garvey.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fishburne. I just want to recognize two people from Columbia that the secretary sends to keep an eye on me whenever I do public speaking.
That's John.
They're actually the resident I-95 experts, if anybody's got a question on it.
All right.
But they're here from Columbia, and I'd like to thank them for driving down.
Yeah, well, thank you all for being with us, and we appreciate what you're doing to help us. If we can be of any assistance here in Jasper County, just call our county administrator, Andy Foson, and we'll help any way we can. So thank you. I'm going out. Thank you all for coming here, taking time out of your schedule and lives to come near us and help us, and we appreciate what you're doing.
We'll keep trying to do the job.
Thank you, thank you. Get us all you can.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all.
Craig, tell them you're down here at least once a month. And they're going to ask you that.
Yes.
Call me on that.
Okay. Next, item B. We have our GM from Beaufort Jasper Board and Sewer Authority, Mr. Joe. Antua, how are you?
Good, great, thank you.
Good. I know we've got some of your board members here.
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure they're in the building. So, Mr. Baker and-
Yes. Mr. Baker's here, our chairs, along with our vice chair, Mr. Greg Paget, and our two appointees from Jasper County, Dr. Singleton and Lorraine Bond. So thank you all for having us.
Yeah, I see everybody coming. Well, we glad you're here, and we appreciate you coming to, coming to give us a presentation. We're eager to hear what, what Board Authority has to say.
Yeah, and thank you. I wanted to also introduce Brian Chemzak, who's our Chief of Plant Operations. He'll be joining me in the presentation. If you could get our PowerPoint. Andy has it. Okay.
While she's loading up the PowerPoint, how are things going at Board Authority?
Good, good. We're, we're busy, very busy. We're going to show you some of the dollars we're spending and some of the things we're investing in. And the primary thing we want to talk about tonight is, well, first, to just give you kind of an update on how things are, what we're doing. I'll tell you a little bit about our planning process and things like that. And then really shift to one of the challenges we're having right now is early morning demands are at peak, hot and dry months, and, and what we're trying to do to address that. But we're, that, that's, just, that's a couple of things we wanted to talk about. But starting with- That's okay. Okay. That's fine, actually. I didn't bring a copy of it there.
Well, y'all should have plenty of water. Savannah River is three feet over flood stage, and my swamp is full of water.
Yeah, well, in this part of the country, we, right, we don't have the same problem other parts have with Source. Source is not our challenge. Savannah's pretty, pretty beautiful, and we've got a very sufficient permit with state for, for withdrawals. But I guess-
Soon as we see it, I'll be there.
Is that the? Yeah, that's the presentation right there. I mean, if I could borrow that, I can just kind of- Oh, you got it all? Okay, perfect.
This is really good.
There you go. Perfect, great. Thank you very much. Yeah, if you can just go to the next slide, please. So like I said, we're going to be talking about statutory authority, the morning water peak demand challenge, what we're doing long term, and then really what we're trying to do short term over the next couple of years and how municipal organizations, entities can help us. We've been holding a series of these briefings throughout Beaufort Jasper County. We met with the city of Hardyville a couple of weeks ago. We met with the other municipalities. And again, thank you all for the opportunity to speak. And of course, happy to take any questions as we go or certainly at the end. So just a quick overview. We do provide water and wastewater services throughout the Low Country. You can see on the map there, we cover quite a wide geographic range, over 750 square miles, two water plants, four laboratories, two, over 200 employees. We serve almost 200,000 South Carolinians throughout the area. Eight wastewater treatment systems. And if you could move to the next one, please. Thank you. I'm going to let Brian kind of talk about our water system and our wastewater system. Brian?
I think you covered it. Savannah River is our source water, if you didn't know. And it is a plentiful river for us. So we have a 99 million gallon a day withdrawal permit, and that is just a very small fraction of what that river flows every day. So on the source water side, we're very secure. We have two water treatment plants. The original one was our Chelsea Water Treatment Plant, which is located off of 170 near Snake Road. And then our Purysburg Water Treatment Plant, which is fairly newer. It was constructed in 2006. Those plants total 39 million gallons a day right now, and they pump into a large distribution network. You can see there, over 1,000 miles of water main. We have booster pump stations, lots of fire hydrants and valves, everything you'd expect to see to go along with our water system. And on the wastewater side, we treat about 10.5 million gallons of sewer a day. We have about 43,000 sewer customers. That's a little bit less than if you recall on the water side. There's still a lot of unsewered areas within our network of water systems. To bring all that sewer into our plants, there's, again, over 1,000 miles type transporting sewer. And because the Low Country is so flat, we have over 500 lift stations that pump that sewer throughout the service area to those plants. Also at the plants, one thing we do, because we do like to maintain a buffer, we've got solar arrays at two of our facilities now. One located in Port Oil, the other one's located on St. Helena. And we're working on future facilities for solar at our Hardyville site, as well as our Cherry Point facility. And all of our trans uses a standard biological treatment to treat wastewater. I won't go into too much detail for you today. I'll turn it back over to Joe.
One question about the solar. Is that like a solar farm field where you collect the, through your solar panels, the?
Yes, yes. We, we're actually getting ready to, as Brian said, we have solar panels at two of our facilities north of the Broad, and we're getting ready to install panels on the south of the Broad facilities. That would, that energy's collected and then ultimately used to help power the plant, and hopefully power the entire plant. Yep. So, yeah, I just wanted to put a couple of those numbers in perspective. As Brian said, we have the two water treatment facilities that can produce up to 39 million gallons per day. To help you understand where we are from a capacity standpoint, because that's a question that we get asked a lot is with all the growth in the area, how are we helping keep it up with capacity? Well, first off, just to get, to put those numbers in perspective, like, our typical daily demand this time of year is about 17, 18 million gallons. So if you think about, we have the capacity to produce 39 million gallons, and we're, our demand is around 18. That number shifts as the weather, along with the weather, because it is predominantly driven by irrigation. As people, as the weather warms up, as people start to want to get their gardens looking pretty and their lawns blushing green, the irrigation adds quite significantly to it. But even when we get to the warmer months, we generally will, you'll see that shift in demand into the twenties. And then as we get into May, June, and July, in those warmer months, we can reach into the low thirties. In fact, last year, our demand hit a peak in a, we'll get to that in a minute, of over 34 million gallons. So, so that's where we have the, really, this is a seasonal kind of thing. Now, what are we doing about that? Now, what are we doing about that? We're looking at, we're actually in the process of adding capacity through our capital program, and we're building the first of two planned expansions at the Purriesburg plant. So, Brian mentioned 39 million gallons. We're adding 15 million gallons. That construction will be completed in 2025 to take us to 54. And then we actually have the ability to move to add another 15 somewhere down the road. So, just kind of put those numbers in perspective. And on the wastewater side, where we have about 19 million gallons of treatment capacity, we're treating about 10 to 11 million gallons per day. So, again, we've got a good buffer in there, but we are looking at what we need to do in the future, and we are expanding the Cherry Point plant in the near future. We'll be adding another 3 and 3/4 million gallons a day capacity. So, and again, I know we're in a, I'm trying to move through quickly. You guys are going to be busy at Jenice tonight. Just want to, you know, we try our best to deliver the safest water we can, meeting all state and federal requirements for health and safety. An important thing for us is balancing that, the needs of the community and try to keep the cost down. We do try to maintain a very sustainable process and try to keep those costs. As you can see from this slide, we deliver water, wastewater, and it costs about a penny a gallon. So, people are paying $3 for a bottle of water at the gas station. Well, our product is one cent per gallon. So, moving to the next slide, please, kind of getting into, as I said, preparing for the future, and I've covered a little bit of this. But part of what we do every five years is a master plan process, which includes looking at what data is, what's coming down the pipe, how many, you know, what's the growth look like? And we use that to help project what projects we're going to need, and we develop a capital program. So, to give you an example, this current capital year, FY '23, we have $66 million allocated for new and existing projects to help increase our infrastructure that's needed for the future. Our three-year plan has about $170 million gal, or excuse me, $170 million for all of those projects that are needed. You know, another question we get all the time is, where you collect all those capacity fees? What do you do with all that? Well, with just two projects alone, the Purriesburg plant, which you'll see there, we're expanding 15 million gallons. That's a 50, over $50 million project, and the Cherry Point project is another project that's going to be over $50 million. So, those are two major investments that we're making to keep up with that future growth. The other big project we've got listed there is the Bluffton Storage Tank, which is another significant project, because that's going to add another 1.5 million gallons of storage to our distribution system, and that's almost a $10 million project. So, three projects right there, we're at about $115 million. So, lots of projects out there that were needed and that we're planning for. If you could move to the next one.
Mr. Mintoa?
Yes, sir.
I know that we have some rather large prospects that are looking at industrial parks, Sherwood Track. Those commercial users, are those, those prospects, if they were to come to fruition, would we have the capacity and the resources on the board authorities to accommodate a large industrial user?
We do. We do. And to that end, I think you all have mentioned some of the monies that had come down earlier from ARPA and those sorts of things. We've actually, last year, when the money came to South Carolina and they created the skip program, we applied for five different grants through that program, three of which were, are in Jasper County. So, we're anxiously awaiting, and I think Sherwood is one of the ones where we are very interested in hoping to get that money to help with the infrastructure there. But yes, the treatment capacity, we have that ability, and so, yeah, there's going to be other infrastructure needed that don't need to be built, but we have the ability to handle that as that comes down.
In terms of the timeline, if we were to land in a large industrial user, is that 12, 24-month timeline to be able to run what we need there as far as the water infrastructure to accommodate one of the large prospects? Or how ready are we?
Well, it probably depend on the project and the size and what the use is, because depending on what, if it's a heavy commercial, they may not have a high water usage or wastewater treatment need, but it could be, you know, let's say it was bottling or some sort of, you know, there are certain industries that might need more. So, the timeline would probably depend on what the needs are and what infrastructure. Our engineers work closely with the developers as well as, we have a good relationship with John Fleming, and he keeps in touch with our engineers on the needs. So, we, you know, we would work with them to anticipate that timeline.
Thank you, Seth.
Yes, sir. So, as I mentioned, I wanted to talk a little bit about the irrigation, which is a driver. So, as I mentioned, if you think about, you know, we're producing on most months 18 to 20 million gallons of water, and then in the summertime and in the warmer months, that demand in the morning gets pushed up almost 50%, or more than 50%. And if you think about it, it's really, you know, as, next slide, please. What our real push is, and I'll let Brian talk about what happened last year, which in May, when we hit our peak, and that's kind of what's helped, part of the drive for this program that we're implementing. So, Brian, why don't you go ahead?
As Joe mentioned, last year, we saw a peak in our water system. We saw a peak day usage of 34.9 million gallons a day. In the previous year, we saw another peak. So, each year, we're seeing a new peak day. And with that comes a little bit of stress on our water system as everybody's waking up and using water in the morning. That's also when irrigation's going off. So, that's really the peak time that we're seeing influence on the system that we'd rather kind of delay. But what that can cause is the change in flow direction as the water's moving through our pipe network. It's not all linear. It's kind of interconnected, and the water typically flows in one direction, but when there's a lot of demand or flow, it can cause it to reverse and maybe go a different way. Those types of things can stir up sediment that's in the pipe and cause discolored water events. In addition to that, some folks may experience lower pressure in their neighborhoods, especially if they're located near a booster pump station or an elevated tank, those types of things. As they're used and drained, we do get low pressure calls on those peak days. This isn't an everyday occurrence. And ultimately, you know, if something were to happen during those peak hours when the system's kind of being stressed, such as a main break or a major fire that required the water, the water would be available for the fire flow. However, it may cause other folks to have no water or very low pressures that would cause us to issue oil water advisory in some areas. So, if you go to the next slide, please. That's one thing we're working on, one, with not only our long-term solution of upgrading our plant so that we can pump and have extra capacity during these peak times of the day. But that won't happen until 2025, so I think Joe's going to tell you a little bit about kind of what our medium, short-term plan is and an ask from us.
Yeah, and so, as Brian mentioned, we are expanding the plant. We're actually going to be breaking ground next, or this month, and having a February 22 formal groundbreaking, so we hope that you all are going to join us there. And we will be, if you could go to the next slide. But as I said, during this next couple of years while we're under construction, what we're doing is, as Brian mentioned, the mornings during those couple of months of the year where we have very hot and dry weather, when everybody's watering in the morning, we're really asking customers so that we can, it's really about spreading the usage out. So, when we know everyone's going to be using water in the morning, we want to get people off of the irrigation schedules in the morning. And so, what we've been asking folks, and we've been meeting with homeowners groups and landscapers and meetings like this to help everyone understand that what we really just need folks to do is spread out that irrigation and avoid the mornings, particularly Monday, that's when we have our highest demand. But it's really about between the hours of 3:00 and 9:00 a.m. when we have the most stress on the system. So, if we can have our customers not watering during those hours and spreading it out to, for odd, the system we've set up is if you, if your address is on odd number, you would water Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, and then on even, Wednesday, Friday, Sunday, so we could avoid Monday. But really, the most important piece is avoiding those early hours, because that's when it really stresses the system. And that's what we're asking folks to do, and I think there's been a little misconception that we're asking people not to use as much water. We're not asking them to do that. We're actually telling them, use as much water as you want, just don't use it all in the morning. So, spread it out throughout the course of the day and help us flatten the usage pattern so that we don't have that huge demand in the morning. So, again, it's really a seasonal issue, and it's something that, once we have the new plant online in 2025, won't really be an issue. So, and then the next, if you could go to the next slide, please. So, really, all we're asking you all is just first, one, thank you for the opportunity to speak, because we wanted to be able to tell you what the challenge is and what the issue is so that you understand where we are, and then help pass that word around about the irrigation management plan. It's really about the community chipping in to help offset this interim period. And then, any opportunities to help us educate the community would be welcome. So, you know, and it says here at the bottom, you know, we really don't want to get into having to do official actions like putting restrictions, and I don't think we need to do that, but if we can't get the, you know, the community to help, then that's something that might be an issue down the road. But next slide, please. So, again, just three simple steps. Adjust your controls to trot out the water every other day, and that's really all you really need to water. Avoid those Mondays in the morning hours, and then we've got stickers that we have people putting on their boxes so that they know to follow that. And really, that's it. I think that's our last slide, maybe.
I think you all have done a good job of, you know, educating the community on that water usage. I've seen it on social media and other outlets, too, so I know you all are doing a full court press on that, and I've never seen it, so.
Yeah, and we are seeing some change, we are seeing some changes, which is the, ultimately, that's what we're looking for, is just to move the needle a little bit so that we don't put that stress on the system. And that's really all we're asking, is just for people to really help us avoid those hours. At this point, you know, happy to take any other questions on that or any of the...
Could I ask you a question, Captain McGorvey?
The thing I'm concerned about, like I say, I've been in this county all my life, and I want to know how much quantity of water in Savannah River is staying. The total, next year, Hartfield, I've got to go inside, ain't going to go water out to Savannah River. And I was looking at areas, there's a lot of areas in Beaufort, Gafford, about water with, if you come down to Savannah River. I live within three miles of that canal built in the back of Beaufort, Gafford Waterway. I do know there, the tide affects. We don't ever see an increase in the salt in the water when it comes into the Beaufort, Gafford Waterway, because your tide affects it. Your tide affects it, and years ago, the tide used to come down around 2:00. And now, the tide is going further north. It affects that river further than it used to 25 years ago. The tide affects, ocean affects that river. What I'm saying is, if you get in play, what's coming in the Hardyville area and all those houses and all those developments, and I doubt that need to lie in house, and you know we've got a saltwater problem, you know we've got a saltwater problem drinking water. Like we've got that set up in Beaufort, Port Royal, and one thing and another. Can that Savannah River, you can put all the coal you want, and yeah, you can put a lot of pump stations and pump, the ocean almost dry if you want it. But if you don't have the water, that's what concerns me. How much can Savannah River span, the water peak? And you're talking about a whole big area down there, and I do know during the summer, that river will get so low that you can almost walk across and don't have a problem. You done said it, you don't want to run an irrigation, you don't want to run an irrigation. Another thing I'll ask when I ask you is the treatment. Where's all this waste management? Where's this waste going? I know you all got facilities to handle it, but you got to pump it somewhere. I understand you're trying to pump it on golf courses. Is that correct? Half them golf courses don't want them, or what would you pump?
What you're addressing?
Where would your runoff go? It's got to go into the creek.
So, if I could, just, the Savannah River, we'll start with that. You're right, the Savannah River is saltwater influenced. Our intake is far enough upstream. We see a change in the water level from the tide, but we don't see any salinity increases. That's something we check for, so the amount they're releasing upstream from the dam keeps it far enough downstream. We've never had a problem with salinity at our intake. As far as the river capacity goes, as Joe mentioned, we do master plans that look out, fairly far-reaching. I think our most recent one went out 40 years. And even with those projected build-outs of everything, our water withdrawal permit from the river, which is 99 million gallons a day, we're not exceeding that. And so, that permit to us has to be considered before they allow anyone else to withdraw water, whether it be upstream or downstream. There's a large group involved, not only from South Carolina but in Georgia, on managing the inputs and outputs of the Savannah River. So, we feel it's a very secure source for our drinking water. As far as where everything goes after it's been treated, we have eight wastewater plants through the two counties. Some of them do go to golf courses, some go into the Beaufort River, some go on to spray fields that we lease. Most recently, we had one on St. Helena. It was managed as a sod farm. That's a use for it. And then the Great Swamp, located off 278, we own about 1,000 acres in there. That's where we also discharge the water from the Cherry Point plant. And that's shown to be a beneficial reuse, so it's helped sustain the ecosystem within that swamp. And then our Hardyville plant, it discharges into the Savannah River as well, but it's downstream of our intake at the Purriesburg plant. So, I hope that...
And that's true, going back into these rivers don't hurt you? You gain, you dish, nothing like that?
No, sir. DEHEC controls the limit we're allowed to put in the river, and it's very strict. So, a lot of times, the water's much cleaner than the river itself, and that's not to say anything bad about the Savannah River, but I'm sure you've seen it. It's very cloudy. It can be brown, you know, as sediment comes in, as swamps fill and drain, the water changes colors. But what leaves the plant, it looks very similar to drinking water every day, and it has no bacteria in it. It's all been killed before we discharge it.
And some of the people there, a lot of times, you go out there and you got contaminated oyster beds, you can't eat oysters of them. Or I was wanting to want contaminated, those oysters on the bed. They've got me saltwater, got me water that's contaminated.
I unfortunately don't know. I think DEHEC could probably give you the best source of information.
I'm really concerned about quantity of water that's coming out that river, because you got other places that use it that water. You got, you know, Beaufort, Beaufort, Savannah use it that water. I've got to use the water, and if they decide to load that dam, if we're going to use a lot of that water before we get to that dam, what will you do?
Call Orleans Waterwell Service.
I was going to say, yeah. We also have two water reservoirs, 160 million gallons each, so we have 320 million gallons of raw water on hand. We also use other technologies, Aquafor Storage Recovery, which is a well. So, in the event of some kind of us not being able to use the river, we have quite a large supply on hand to continue to serve the population.
Thank you. Any other questions from Captain McGorvey? That is...
I was wondering with the meetings, and you were talking about the Great Swamp, and that was coming near to the basin. And after that, I'm telling you, there was said, how would that work?
Well, currently, like I mentioned, we own over 1,000 acres in the Great Swamp. Originally, we owned, I think it was 660 acres, and that was permitted for 7.5 million gallons a day. We then purchased another track north of it, bringing us to our current total. At that time, our treatment capacity was still only 7.5 million gallons a day, so DEHEC didn't increase our discharge capacity to the swamp since we didn't have the treatment. But now that we're in the process of upgrading the Cherry Point plant, we're also asking DEHEC to increase the capacity of the swamp, and things are going well. We're discussing with DEHEC. They're reviewing all of our compliance records today. We've been out on-site with them, then with our biologists, their biologists. Everybody's just kind of been trekking through the swamp, making sure it's looking good and healthy.
And one of the solutions was to put it back into the canal. How would that work?
Yes, sir. That is kind of a long-term solution. Currently, that'd be considered, I believe, an indirect, yeah, potable water reuse, which South Carolina is entertaining adding regulations on it. It would work simply, the water would get pumped into our canal, and as I mentioned, the water leaving these treatment plants, it looks just like drinking water. So, as far... So as far as treatment processes go, it wouldn't affect any of our operations. And obviously, we'd have to do some education about the water cycle and everything else that goes along with folks that may be interested.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mantua, I would like to recognize your chairman of the board, Mr. Jimmy Baker, and ask him if he'd like to say anything and maybe introduce your board members.
Okay. First of all, as Joe said, thank y'all for giving us the opportunity to be here tonight, and we can address some of your questions and concerns.
And make sure I get them all okay. We've got Ray Bond here tonight, and.
Dr. Singleton?
And in the back, we've got Greg Page, and that's our board members. I've got them all right.
Okay, yeah, but again, we do appreciate this opportunity. We got, we got a lot of challenges, we know that.
We all do.
With the growth coming, but we're doing our best to stay ahead of the curve.
Well, I know we committed to working together to make things better for, for everybody involved in our county. And Mr. Mantua, my clerk of council just texted me, we have not gotten an invitation to that groundbreaking, the county council, but if y'all send this one, I know that we'd like to be there.
We will take care of that.
Thank you, sir.
I think that's what dropped in there yesterday.
They better hurt. Thank y'all very much.
Andy, any other questions, just let me know.
Okay, moving right along. Next, we have our public, open the floor to the public. Any citizen of the county may sign in to speak in person at the council meeting. We also like to address council on matters pertaining to county services and operations. Presentations will be limited to three minutes per person, the total public input will be limited to 30 minutes. Please be mindful of your comments as young people are watching when this is being broadcast to the public. With that being said, our first public speaker signed in is Ms. Hedy Frazier. Welcome, Ms. Frazier.
Good evening, Chairman Salz, county council members, and citizens of Jasper County. My name is Hedy Frazier, I live in, live in Cusahatchie, 6717 West Frontage Road. I'm here, along with other concerned citizens of Jasper County, about the demolition of the Cusahatchie Elementary School, which was a historical school, which was built back in 1957. A little history, South Carolina passed a law back in 1951 to equal, for the equalization of schools, and that means that both black and white schools would have equal quality in, in building. And so the fund was provided to build these schools in the communities. Cusahatchie Elementary provided a home for our senior citizen and food bank, Head Start, and it was even our voting precinct. Family reunions and many other events were held there. We were heartbroken that our school was torn down without our knowledge. There should have been better communication with the citizens of Jasper County. We should have been notified through the news media, on the radio, flyers in the mail, and even in the newspaper. One of the citizens that lived near the school shared that they weren't notified beforehand about the dust that the demolition created, so that they could take the necessary precautions to protect themselves from the dust. The citizens of Cusahatchie would like to know now, because we don't want to cry over spilt milk, because it was really hurtful that our school was torn down. So now, the citizens of Cusahatchie would like to know the date when our school will be rebuilt, and we would also like to participate in the rebuilding plans. Plus, we want Cusahatchie Elementary School placed on the new building. In closing, let's work together to ensure that the citizens of Jasper County are better informed in the future. We look forward to hearing from you, and we also look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have, I believe, is it Zini Freeman? Did I say that right? Okay, next on the list is Stephen Schmidt.
Good evening, Chairman Salz, council members and citizens of Jasper County. My name's Steve Schmidt, and I represent the pilots and mechanics out at the airport, 82 of us. I have here in my hand a ordinance that was passed back in 20, October of 2019, it's called Ordinance 19-14. And then I have this ordinance that we're gonna get a second reading of today, 2023-02. And what's common about both of these ordinances is they're focused on the Jasper County Aeronautics Commission. And the first one that was passed back in 2019 was basically an attempt for the county to reach out and grab the Jasper County Aeronautics Commission and bring it under county governance. Both of these ordinances have the same two predicates. The first one on both of them basically cites that the Jasper County Aeronautics Commission was created by a state law back in 1949, so that makes the commission a state-appointed commission. They both agree on that, and that's a fact, nobody disputes that at all. The second predicate is where the problem is, it cites the Home Rule Act as giving the county power to devolve the Aeronautics Commission into Jasper County governance, and it does not do that. I'd like to read exactly what that law does say, so that we can all be straight about it. It's State Law 4-9-170, and I quote, "The council shall provide by ordinance for the appointment of all county boards, committees, and commissions," and this is the most important part, "whose appointment is not provided for by the general law or the Constitution." So let me paraphrase that. Counties can appoint boards, committees, and commissions, but they can't do so for boards, committees, and commissions that were appointed by the state. And Jasper County Aeronautics Commission was appointed by the state. Clearly, the law's purpose was to inform county councils of an important limit to their authority to appoint boards, committees, and commissions. Don't touch things that belong to the state. Since both of these ordinances, fundamental predicate is untethered to the law, all of its following dependent ordinances regarding the things about the Jasper County Aeronautics Commission are not employed. We are working with the Jasper County Legislative Delegation to resolve this matter. The law is very clear about how the commission is, is, is supported with members, and we're working with the legislative delegation to get three members appointed by the governor from nominations received by, by the legislative, legislative delegation, and we don't need the council's help in the matter to reestablish the commission. In the interest of time, I have other things to talk about, but it's been a long night, and I'll cover those at the next meeting. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Baylor O'Kane.
All right, all right, Chairman Salz, council members, Jasper residents. My name's Baylor O'Kane, I'm a pilot, hangar owner also at Claudine Airport. Just want to go over last month's meeting, the council was told that on January 17th, providing a grass runway at the airport would cost thousands upon thousands of dollars. That may be true for adding a new runway, but not true for adding a turf operation. First, let's make sure the difference between a grass runway and a turf operation. A grass runway is foremost a runway which immediately triggers a large body of FAA requirements that can be, that can't be met without a comprehensive plan backed by an expensive engineering study, all of which costs thousands of dollars. A turf operation is not a new runway, but rather an area next to an existing asphalt or concrete runway, an area of turf suitable for gliders, tow plants, old tailwheel aircraft that prefer taking off and landing on grass, which will design for that, and calling it something other than a runway is irrelevant, so regulations regarding the runway is irrelevant. The airport manager reported to the council that had three estimates of 90, 180, and $210,000 that he was working with Holt Consulting to do a study for this, for the next steps. None of that is required by the FAA to support a turf operation. No, there are two things that are required, and they both are free. First, the airport manager or some other agent of the airport sponsor needs to send a letter to the FAA requesting their assistance in creating a turf operation. Second, the FAA sends an expert to inspect a proposed area, the inspector may suggest certain improvements as necessary, but after these are accomplished, the county will seek a letter of approval from the FAA. And lastly, the airport diagram can be amended and other publications modify, so pilots will know where the approved location at is. That runway was depicted on the original master plan for this airport. It has hence then been removed from the master plan. I don't know how, when, or where, but I have my ideas of, of why it was taken off and who did, but that's for another story. Since the airport manager will not send a letter to the FAA requesting a turf operations area, I urge the council to consider passing a motion directing the county administrator to do so in his place. And I have the advisory circular right here, it's in black and white, the FAA is welcoming turf operations, and we're using it now already. It needs a few minor improvements, but not to the tune of 30, 80, $200,000. We can do some grassroots stuff, we have volunteers, we'll even, you know, man shovels and durge if we have to. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe it, it's Niaisha? Did I say that right? Eggwood? She's not here?
She's not here.
Thank you, sir. We have Priscilla Frazier. Oh, are you speaking for her?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that. Would you state your name, please, sir?
My name is Earl White, I live at 151 Battery Point, I'm a state chairman, councilman, councilman lady. And I want to speak, I wanted someone to address, I own some property at the intersection of 462 and Long Home Road, and my next door neighbor is doing some mining there, but my understanding is illegal mining. And I'd like for someone to tell me what are the procedures, you know, on someone, you know, getting a mining permit and doing so, because I would never notify, I hadn't seen any notice near my property, you know, stating what was going to be going on. So I feel somewhat perplexed, like, you know, what's going on? So I would like to just see if I can get someone to maybe call me, write me, do something, you know, let me know what's going on.
Our county administrator will get your information and set up a time to meet with you and investigate that for you. Thank you, sir. Ms. Priscilla Frazier? Welcome.
Good evening, Councilman Salz, and other chair councilmen. I stand before you tonight, and I'm not sure what I'm coming to you for, is it in your whim of doing something about it, but we are constantly growing, and you are having a lot of housing development, and new people coming in. Have anyone thought about looking into the medical facilities, the hospitals? We have three in between Beaufort County, Jasper County, you have three across the state line in Georgia. We have all these people coming in. What type of facilities, or hospital rooms are we gonna have for these people coming in? Right now, you go to the emergency rooms, and people are staying in the hallway at night, don't have a bed to put them in. So are we looking into increasing our beds at the hospitals we have, or are we looking at trying to build new hospitals? I mean, if we go through a pandemic like we did the last three years ago, and if we end up like New York and some of those places, we don't have places or beds for these people to, to go to. So I was just wondering, I don't know if that's something you all look into, but I think we gonna need some hospital beds. The other thing is, I came to you as the landfill anomaly again. The last time, I think, and that's been years ago, they said they had like 17 years. I think 17 years has passed. And I would like to know how much longer does waste management have to that landfill? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frazier can give you that information, Ms. Priscilla? Last name is Wilson. Yeah, okay. Ms. Wilson?
Hi. Given honor to God and to everyone here, thank you for letting me speak to you today. I'm here to speak about the center that was torn down in Cusahatchie. I just found about, I just heard about it about two days ago, and forgive me, because I don't know what's the plan for it, but I would like to recommend, I ask you to consider who made that decision about our young children from one to, to 15, because that center served it as a school for the after-school program. And our kids need somewhere, when they get out of school, that someone can help them with their homework. Our single parents where we live, because it was kid or more to, the black children of the community was the majority, and those are single parents that their father are not with them. And most of those mother are working people that need somewhere for their kids to go. And when they're, put the kids there at six or seven in the morning, and they keep them till five, that's a big half of them. Our kids need, like I'm saying, it was kid or more black children. Our kids' education are low level, and they need somewhere like an after-school program, where when their mother is working, they can go somewhere where someone can help them with their education. I feel that we need to give our children the best opportunity as everybody as children to get some education. Without education at an early year, they are going to be lost. And when they get lost, they are going to be more crying on that level. And if we can catch them when they are young, and secure them, and teach them about the computer and the technology that's going up, then they will have a better chance of life, you know? So I'm asking whoever make that decision, keep in mind of our children. Most of those children that was at that center was full staff, let me see, full staff. So those children are already on a low level. They do not need down there a park. Park is just gonna bring crying. They need somewhere where you can set up some computers and catch their brains before it get tampered with in a bad way. So I'm just here, and I appreciate the school, because I'm 59, going on 59, and it was there when I was in school, and it happened, my mother, and it happened to anybody else. So I'm just saying, if you see fit in your heart to put something constructive for them, you understand? I feel in worry, if a hurricane come, we as poor people can go there, you know? Another thing, it served it as a free lunch, where their mother are working when school is out, that they could go there for a cup of, and make sure our children eat, you know? So that's it, I just hope that, you know, you let your heart guide you, and we thank you for telling it down, because we needed it down. But when you build, build for our children.
Thank you.
Okay, God bless you.
Thank you, God bless you.
All right.
Moving right along. Next item on our agenda, item B, Mrs. Lisa Wagner, consideration of first lien in the ordinance to amend Article 8, 8, the Jasper County zoning ordinance, Gateway Corridor, Overlake District. It's better to find the location of the designated highway and then the official zoning map of Jasper County to expand the GC OD to include the property located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Alligator Alley and Offland Road as depicted on the attached
At the planning commission meeting in November 2022, there was an application to a rezona property that's located here, identified by that blue, that, uh, blue, that's the property. And after some discussion, it was decided that it would be better, a better alternative to extend the Gateway Corridor, Overlake District to include this property. The Gateway Corridor, Overlake District allows additional uses that are found in the general commercial district, while prohibited uses that have been identified as inappropriate for the Gateway Corridor. And the Gateway Corridor, Overlake District also requires additional design standards, which are intended to protect the character and appearance of the entrance into Jasper County. The ordinance. The ordinance, the Gateway Corridor, Overlake District, the ordinance never did adopt a map. It just referred to in the ordinance, it said that the Gateway Corridor, Overlake District shall apply to all land within five hundred feet of the right of way of the designated highway. So it's unclear in that ordinance, when you look at it, what's the designated highway? Now, if you go back and look to the cover ordinance that adopted that in two thousand and eighteen, and there it said from the, it was Highway seventeen from the intersection of Strain Place to Alligator Alley. So here is Alligator Alley, and then it's Speedway Boulevard, Highway seventeen back to Strain Place. Our IT, Mr. Krupp, he made this map for us, and the hashed area, it represents the five hundred feet within the Highway seventeen. So it would capture this, it would clearly define, the, someone text would be amended to clearly define that it is Highway seventeen, begin that intersection of Strain Place, and then then Alligator Alley is depicted on this Gateway Corridor, Overlake District map, and it would include this map, and we would, the ordinance presented to you would amend the official zoning map, just to extend that just a little further there, just for first reading tonight.
Any questions from council, Mr. Kim?
Again, if you didn't mention it, meaning that this was not part of the conference.
As far as the rezoning of that property.
What determines when you stop getting this Overlake District? I mean, it just keeps on going, or why?
No, this, we wouldn't ask for this to go anymore. This is Off-ramp Road here, and the second property is undeveloped, but this, there's a third property there, has the, is being developed right now with a small used car lot. And the fourth property is this recreational pond here. There's a cell tower that can't be developed any further. And then it's the National Wildlife Refuge just beyond that in here. And back here is also the, all those wetlands and marshlands you see are part of the National Wildlife Refuge owned by the U.S. Army. So it can't be extended anymore this way. Over here's developed, this is the nursery, and then you have the oak wood subdivisions. So this lies pretty much, ends right there.
Councilor, any questions? Ms. Clark?
No.
Mr. Garbey? Okay, at this time, I'll call for a motion, please.
I'd like to make the motion to accept the including the overlay district of oh three eight dash zero zero dash zero two dash zero zero two.
Do we have a second?
Sure.
Any questions? All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All right, motion carries. The next item, we have a public hearing, consideration of second reading of an ordinance zero dash two zero two three dash oh two, the amendment of Jasper County Code of Ordinance including Article four, boards and commissions, Chapter two, administrations allowed to amend Vision seven of Jasper County Aeronautics Commission, including the provisions, the form of qualifications, duties, responsibilities of the Aeronautics Commission. At this time, we'll open for a public hearing. And we've already had a couple of people speak to this. Public hearing going once, public hearing going twice, and we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
To postpone this second reading until we can have a workshop.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Sure.
Any questions? No questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All right, thank you, motion carries. Mr. Kimberly Burgess, consideration of first reading of an ordinance of Jasper County, County of Jasper, meaning the fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty-three budget as originally adopted by ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash seventeen, adopted on June twenty-seventh, twenty-third.
Thank you, Chairman Sals, members of council. This is basically a budget amendment in order to pay for the storage array that the council approved some meetings ago. The purchase price was about five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. We have requested a budget amendment to be six hundred and thirty-five thousand, which includes the eight percent sales tax that we have to pay on it. We would like to have this purchase paid for from the fund balance primarily for two reasons. One, the leasing option was, was unrealistic for the county, and we have the funds in the fund balance, and we're also being, have the opportunity to be reimbursed for half of this purchase from the South Carolina nine-one-one funds. So it didn't make sense to pay an exorbitant amount of interest for something that we would be reimbursed half, for half of it. So this is basically just the first reading for this ordinance, in that the purchase would be treated as revenue as a transfer in from the fund balance. Half would be in the, or in the regular general revenue, and the other half would go into the communications revenue. That portion would be able to be refunded by the state, and then the expenditures would be treated as dispatch equipment and computer equipment and IT and in the communications department.
Ms. Burgess, correct me for a moment, wasn't this presented to us by Mr. Bostick and explained to us at the last meeting when the original request?
We kind of tagged him, yes, sir.
Gotcha, okay.
It was the purchase, approval of the purchase, but we had not worked out any payment options. We're going to bring those back.
Sometimes I process a lot of information I need refreshing. Any questions from council, Mr. Kim?
No.
Ms. Jack?
No.
Ms. Clark?
No.
Mr. Garbey? Okay, at this time, we'll call for a motion for approval, please.
So move. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions from council?
None.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. All aye, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Next, we have Ms. Heather Raff, who will be providing us with her legislative update. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. And how can I move this far, just a question? On a power point?
No, no, I have a call for this.
Okay, I can just tell you?
Absolutely, yes. Do you like the slide?
Ms. Raff, clearly from some of our presentations earlier, our legislative delegation must be doing some things we aren't aware of, so maybe your job might be more intense than you may have signed up for.
I'm here to help. If I may, Chairman, may I approach and go ahead and hand you out some copies? Okay, great. Yep, one of each. Ones for me, and then ones for the other. So Chairman Sals, Vice Chairman Clark, and council, before I get started, I did want to take a moment and just let you all know how much I appreciate being able to come before council, and I look forward to continuing updates as we move through this legislative process. My name is Heather Raff. I specialize in consulting, project management, strategy, and advocacy, and I am proud to be your legislative liaison and work with you all in Columbia here originally as well as at the federal level. So let's take a look at what our Jasper County delegation currently looks like. We have gone through elections and redistricting. Now, as a reminder, at the South Carolina State House, we have a hundred and twenty-four house members, we have forty-six senators, and we're in our hundred and twenty-fifth session, which is the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four session. In alphabetical order, we have at our senate level Senator Tom Davis, District forty-six, and then Senator Marjorie Bright Matthews, District forty-five. Senator Bright Matthews is our chairwoman of the Jasper County delegation, and Tom Davis is our vice chair. Moving down to the representative side, we have some new faces in Representative Jeff Bradley. He traditionally represented Hilton Head Island in DeFuski, but during redistricting, came in under Levy. We also have a new face, Representative Bill Hager. A lot of you might be familiar with him from his work with Hampton County EDC and Dominion. He was also an engineer and did a lot of work in Beaufort and Jasper and Hampton County as his entire career. And then, of course, we have Representative Weston Newton representing us. So again, new delegation, and we're excited to work with them. So let's take a look at what we've accomplished so far since I've been online with you all. We had a delegation ask. This ask should look pretty familiar to most of you that were here last year. We are looking at a standalone sheriff's office for around eight point four million dollars. Now, let's talk about how we got to this project. It was identified in a planning study in two thousand and twenty. This will be a twenty-five thousand square foot standalone sheriff's office. That's a mouthful. With twenty-five hundred square feet of vehicle storage, warehousing, and impound yard. And then this will give us good space for administration, investigations, patrol, training, storage, victims advocacy evidence, narcotics and animal control. So we're asking for eight point four million dollars from our, the state for that. In addition, we are looking to tap into South Carolina Parks Recreation and Tourism with a BMX bicycle track for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This was identified in two thousand and twenty-one. It was born out of resident interest for a public-private partnership. It provides an outlet for recreation for our residents as well as our kids left behind due to lack of recreational activities. This allows our visitor population to flourish as BMX bicycle travelers tend to trend younger, travel, spend more dollars, and stay multiple days. It creates a regional draw for us down in the Low Country of South Carolina, and it supports spending in our local business community. So those are our two delegation asks for this year. Coming up, let's talk about the Association of Counties Legislative Day at the State House. This is coming up on February twenty-second. I think I heard Joe from Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority say that that was the day of the ribbon cutting. I hope that most of y'all will be up at the State House. I know that it's also Regional Day with the Jasper County Chamber. But this is a new format this year as compared to last year, where I know a lot of y'all were, were with me last year. On Wednesday, February twenty-second, we will be at the USC Alumni Center starting at ten a.m. This is located right next to the convention center, behind Liberty Tap Room, right next to the Hampton Inn, within walking distance to the State House. We'll have a legislative briefing, and then we'll go to the State House to meet with our delegation and talk with them about priority projects. We'll then come back to the USC Alumni Center, have a late lunch, have some meetings on matters of county interest from the Association of Counties, and then we'll go back to the State House to finish up either committee meetings or one-on-one meetings with our delegation regarding our ask. We'll then proceed to the Pummett Club from five to seven, and that was something that we had last year, and we'll be doing that this year again, and then dinner with the legislative delegation at Liberty Tap Room. And if you're staying for Thursday, February twenty-third, there's continuing education meetings as well as the chairman's workshop. So let's talk about what's coming online next, and one of the things that I will be working on with you all, and that is the opioid settlement fund. This is a really hot topic around the state right now, and I'm pulling together as much information as possible, and I have some best case uses from other counties if you'd like to talk about that. We've been allocated about seventy-five thousand dollars so far out of two settlements in the, and this is very important, there's the guaranteed political subdivision sub-funds, so that's the fund that our county is, is under. And that's with the opioid settlement case. These funds will continue to grow with each settlement received, and again, this is about an eighteen-year cycle. In order to draw down the funds, we must submit a plan of use that meets the criteria established in the South Carolina Guide to Approved Uses for Investing in Opioid Funds. And that's the copy that I printed off for each of you all, so that you have a copy. So the suggested next steps, and again, this is just what I'm suggesting, we don't have to go this route, but I think that this is a good starting point, is to organize a county-led Jasper County opioid task, opioid fund joint task force, JCOFTS, we might need to condense that a little bit, consisting of partner agencies, nonprofit schools, hospitals, emergency management, fire rescue, law enforcement across the board. Hire an opioid settlement consultant to facilitate these meetings and research best practices alongside of me, I can help in that process, so that we can produce a plan and start drawing down on these funds. And then again, that community report would have buy-in from the community as well as from the council, so we can start allocating some of those funds, whether they're going to nonprofits, or they're going to AMS, wherever they end up going. So, and again, remember, we have to meet the criteria for fund of use in each of those, in each of those grants or levels that we're doing the giving on, so we just need to make sure that we have that solidified plan. My next update to you all, hopefully next month, will be on our RIA investments. Joe from Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority just spoke on that, and then also exciting news from the Office of Broadband Investments. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
I don't have, back in time, your opioid, whatever, you know, you ever heard of Jasper Alliance? That's what they're supposed to do, exactly what you said they're supposed to do. The vice chairman, Clark is on that board, and we meet once a month with opioid, they're what the state gives us, and the BMX.
Yes.
I thought that was a dead deal. That last year, that was, the person that was going to develop that said, no, we don't want to go there.
We researched one potential property site for the site, and it went, didn't work out, that one particular site.
I thought that was going to be in the park.
Yeah, well, that was it. We looked at a parcel in the park, it was a parcel recommended, and it turned out to be wet after the wetland delineation, so we dropped that.
So we should look for something else to replace, or are we going to do something?
We still want to do it, but we want to at least see if we can explore the funding, because we do have a private group that wanted to partner with us, see if we can find another piece of property that may work.
Who wants a butterfly track? Is that something that we don't?
No longer, no sooner.
No? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor, any questions? Ms. Clark? Councilor Garbey? Heather, thank you, and I know that all the council looks forward to being with you in Columbia. I will be presenting to the chamber that day, so I will be, be there. I might come later that evening, maybe for dinner with everybody, I'll see how things go, so thank you for everything you're doing, and if we can help you, I know that all our council members probably would like to participate in these projects and have input and be a part of the plan.
That sounds fantastic, and I hope that you can come up to Columbia after you present. And just to let you know, I'm providing some dates to the Jasper Chamber for two thousand and twenty-four, so that hopefully we don't have any conflicts, and we can all go to everything. I know there's always gonna, we can always try.
We have five council members, and we try to cover our bases the best we can, and everybody conquer and divide.
I just wanted to let you know, I am trying on that.
Don't sweat it. I know I can't be everywhere, and I won't be everywhere. It's good.
All right, thank you very much, and I'll see y'all next month.
Thank you.
See you.
Okay, Ms. Wanda, consideration of reappointment request by Mr. Danny Black of the Southern Carolina Alliance to reappoint Mr. Grady Woods, Brizton Town Council, for another three-year term to the SCA Board of Directors.
Yes, sir. We received a letter from Mr. Black, President of the Southern Carolina Regional Development Alliance. He's requesting that council consider the reappointment of Town Regent Councilman Grady Woods or reappoint a replacement for a three-year term. The staff recommendation at this time, since we have no other nominees, is, as Mr. Black noted in this letter, that Town Regent Councilman Grady Woods has been an excellent director for the Southern Carolina Alliance and has represented the county well, and it's the staff's recommendation to reappoint him to the SCA Board of Directors for another three-year term.
And I have spoken to Mr. Woods, and I know that has his wishes. And I have spoken to Mr. Woods, and I know that has his wishes to be reappointed, and he is a faithful participant at the 10th Hallmark Meeting, so he is actively involved in the representee county vision. That being said, do we have a motion for reappointment of Mr. Grady Woods to the SCA? Yes, sir.
Did we ask Ridgeland if that was okay with that? Isn't that their representative?
It is, yes.
Just by party mill? I mean, we should give them the courtesy of at least saying, is that right?
To my knowledge, that that is the consensus.
Okay, that's all I, just want to make sure that they're not siding.
I'll make a motion that Mr. Woods reappointed back to the board.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions? You're known. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, thank you. Next, we have consideration of reappointment of Ms. Lynn Smith to the Library Board of Trustees for another three-year term. Ms. Juan, she accepted that, and this?
Yes, sir. She has actually turned in another application for me. She is very excited about staying on the board, and she's brought a lot to it, from what I understand, and we would really like to get her reappointed for four years to give council a lot of to do so.
Any comments, questions from council?
Make a motion she be reappointed back to the board.
We have a motion, and we have a second.
Sure.
Any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, thank you, motion carries. Mr. Danny Lewis, consideration of the USPS Agreement for Installation and Maintenance of a Gauging Station at the Ridgeland Claudine Airport.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, Chairman Salles, and distinguished council members. Praying to you tonight in the agreement for installation and maintenance of a gauging station on behalf of the United States Geological Survey. The plan is to install that gauging station at the Ridgeland Claudine Airport. We have found what we think is an appropriate spot just inside the perimeter fencing on the east side of the runway. This is not on the west side, but on the east side of the runway, and it's just off of the parking lot there at Terminal North. The Geological Survey does not have a gauging station in Jasper County, so they approached us about installing that with potential at the Ridgeland Airport. Prior to, now they've installed a number of these sites at DOT installations, but we don't have an installation here that will fit the bill, so we graciously advised them that we would consider to pass on to council to approve the agreement for installation and maintenance of a gauging station. By the way, this station, this gauging station is for weather metrics, temperature, wind speed, wind direction, loss of humidity, barometric pressure, and of course, as a, also a rain gauge. We have a latitude and longitude location that is inside of the agreement here, and that's where we will place the gauging station should you agree. Also want to make you aware that the agreement becomes effective for a period of 10 years, but there's two things you need to know about this, is that within the first 10 years of the agreement, the agreement can only be terminated by the United States Geological Survey upon 90 days' rip notice. For the next 10 years, should you decide to go that way after 10 years, then the agreement will continue in force unless terminated by the United States Geological Survey or by Jasper County. So I just want to let you know that that was an interesting facet of the agreement. You also have, and you'll have to get a photograph of what the typical installation looks like. It won't take up very much space at all. The power is solar power as well as a backup battery. So again, this agreement is for a period of 10 years.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Any comments or questions from council? Mr. Kemp?
No.
The workup.
Thank you all. Okay, at this time, I'll call for a motion, please.
So move.
Have a second.
Sure.
Questions from council? Any questions? At this time, we'll call for approval, please. Everybody in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Ms. Burgess, consideration of change order number eight from the Seamoral Construction Company for the Marshco Fire Station. I know you gave us some good details during the workshop. Does anybody have any questions from Ms. Burgess?
No. So I have, I have two change orders.
Two?
Yes, yes, sir. So the first one, I believe, on the agenda is for the Seamoral Construction Company. That one is the, we need to change the wire size to accommodate the fire pump house, and the amount is a net amount of $7,849. They gave us a credit. It was around $12,000 to $13,000. They've given us about a $5,000 or $6,000 credit. So that is the first on the agenda, which we did not talk about at the workshop.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Kemp?
No.
Dakins, Mr. Garbay, Ms. Clark?
No. Make a motion.
Okay, at this time, we got a motion from Ms. Clark. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Any questions? We'll call for a motion for approval, please. I mean, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Okay, consideration of change order number seven from Thomas and Hunt Engineering for Marshco Fire Station.
Yes, sir. We did talk about this, and the reason being that the construction continues and continue to need their services.
Okay. Any questions from Ms. Burgess? Time to call for a motion for approval.
So move.
We have a second.
Sure.
Any normal questions? We'll call, everybody in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Councilmember comments? We'll start with Mr. Kemp, please.
I liked the time I was with Leroy Snead with his weight, and he was one kind of man. First thing, the person got up and said, he was honored that he's hit in the back of the head, and that just came out of me. Now, so he was a, must have been, I met him once or twice, but anyway, and that's about it. I'll just keep on going. Back to you.
Please give honor to Christ. We worship each and every one of you. Thank the Lord for everybody still staying safe and be safe. That's all I have to say.
Councilman Garbay? Any comments or questions?
I don't have any.
Ms. Clark?
Our intended last meeting, that's our regional transportation meeting. All of this that you occurred in here tonight, those are the things that's given out at the last meeting. And if you would like to have an update after these meetings, I'll bring up my Lisa, Lisa says on the honesty, forward with that. So also, as we say, we lost our icon, a legend, Mr. Snead. But also, I would like to say hats off to my son-in-law, Jasper County resident, Chief Command Sergeant Major Stephen T. Olston. Had a change of command on yesterday in Columbia. He is now on the incoming, well, he is deprecated, Chief Master Sergeant now. So he's moving right on up the ladder, and you don't find too many of those around.
No, that's a big deal.
In Jasper County. And I was so proud of him yesterday, and he was marching with the commanders and generals and whoever there were, so many were in there, but he takes over, I think it's 3,000 soldiers. He's over now, and everybody spoke, gave him a great, great accolade. They just praised him to the most. And I'm his mother-in-law, but I feel the same way about him. He's a great man, and if I had to switch between my daughter and Stephen, I'll take Stephen. Because Stephen brings me money, Stephen, he's cool. He takes care of me. He comes to my house every night to be sure my door is locked and the alarm is on.
That's a good name.
You couldn't ask for a better person than that. I'll put on, daddy.
Yeah.
I know mommy knows.
Go ahead.
Good.
Thank you.
So that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, Ms.
And help me pray, y'all help me pray for our chairman. Help me pray for our chairman.
I'll take all the prayers you give. Thank you.
Yeah, because he would not get out of me before 9:00.
I'm trying. We'll get out of there before 9:00. Just a couple of quick things. February 22nd, we have our State of the County address in Hardyville that Jasper Chamber puts on, where I'll be speaking as chairman and Jasper County Council, and both mayors from Hardyville and Ridgewill be speaking as well. I did have our Southern Carolina Executive Board meeting last week as well, and I'll keep my report short and sweet, and I just want to honor the Snead family, Mr. Leroy. We served in Rotary together and was one of my advisors for many years, somebody who I confided in and always enjoyed speaking with, a major contributor to this county and the council as well, and he will be missed, so I'll give honor to him and his family. All right, at this time, I will turn this over to Andy for his administrative report.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, thank you. Just have three quick things. Two of them are on the report, I mean, two of them are not on the report and one of them is. Ms. Burgess is going to be approaching you to pass out the ACTFOR, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2022. So that's for your reading pleasure, and we can have that distributed, I mean, we can have the auditor come in and present to you at any time you'd like, a regular meeting or workshop, whatever your preference is. And at the end of this, I'm going to ask her, I've also come up, I believe, this year, to give you a quick update on the tax sale. We did not provide you a little summary of the tax sale and how that went. The only item I wanted to remind you about or update you on was the countywide impact fee study. I remind you that the county actually approved this back in December of 2020, and impact fees are a difficult thing to establish. They are proposed, where you have allowed us to enter into an agreement with Tishla Vice Incorporated. They have been working on impact fee study for you since that time. That involves dealing with department heads and capital plans and so forth. It also, we took the extra time to work with the municipalities, the town of Ridgeland and the city of Hardyville, and you allowed us to bring onboard Jay Brad Consulting in February 2022, specifically to help with the road projects. Working, the roads is probably the most difficult portion. We have about almost a half a billion dollars of the road projects to complete over the next 20 years, and we want to gain consensus on those road projects and make sure that we're trying to flesh out all the alternative funding sources so that the report is as good as it can get when it gets to you before you have time to deliberate it. It also has allowed us to coordinate potential 2024 transportation sales tax efforts with Beaufort County, which has been very helpful because we're all looking at some of the same roads, specifically Route 278, Highway 170, and Archie Boulevard. And the draft report is nearing its completion. During that time since 2020, we've had a new partial rect director, a new division director of development services, and a new division director for emergency services. So we had to kind of go back and remind ourselves where we started from the beginning of what the capital plans that we had put together. And so I'm hopeful, oh, I also wanted to mention, there's also a same study, same consultant is completing a impact fee study for the Jasper County School District as well. We propose to present those to you at the same time so you can evaluate all that and discuss it. And I am going to go out on a limb and say I'm hopeful that in the next 90 days, we'll probably have a draft report ready for your review so that you can start thinking about this. If you have any other questions of me, I'm happy to answer them, but if not, I'll let Ms. Burgess give you a quick update on the tax sale results.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Goose Hatchet School?
Yes.
Come, nobody would know that I didn't know about it being torn down.
I think it was partially more falling down than tearing down. Councilman Atkins and I had a, had a meeting with a community group, and you heard some comments this evening. What we're going to do, Mr. Kemp, is pick up with some of the community members, talk about some concepts that we've had an initial discussion with you about, about putting together a capital plan through MBCom for your consideration of a new community center there, and perhaps combine that with the need for the fire station in that area too, so that we may be able to do something.
Well, you know, we have to, when we, where, when we get your cars, we'll have to do it by resolution. Why wasn't this done by resolution?
We wouldn't do a demo project by resolution, but.
You mean we could tear down a building without anybody from the council knowing about it?
If it is a public ticket.
I don't care if it's fallen down, it's still there. I mean, we still have the metal that are up in the graves. That's fallen down. We would, and we were entertained that, not this council or before I got on council, we were entertaining doing something bad.
Right. The notification, I apologize for, hey, permission, I don't apologize for. I hope that explains it.
Well, it's just, it's kind of embarrassing when people call you up and say, what did you do? What happened? Nobody, I don't know, and I had to work to find out myself. So, thank you.
I apologize for putting you in that position.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fordham. Okay, is that everything? Ms. Burgess, you?
I have one, Ms. Fordham wanted to give, and give you the results of the tax sale. There were 275 properties sold, the total tax, taxes paid were 178,409.86, and the total amount positive was $3,575,355.21.
That was $3,000,000?
Yes, sir. Any questions on the tax sales, Ms. Burgess?
No.
You're known, thank you, Ms. Burgess. You have concluded our council meeting, and at this time, we will call for a motion in adjournment.
I'll make a motion too.
Have a second. All in favor, stand up. Thank you all, and have a good night.